Welcome to the Worcester School Committee meeting tonight. And if you cannot stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States government, and to the power of which stands one nation, under God, in the resolve of liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous night, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, they flew through the night that our flag was still there. O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
I just ask if I may remain standing for a moment of silence for Isaac Boach, who was a long-term bus driver for the City of Worcester, passed away suddenly. Also for Paul Ford, who did the 365Z Foundation here for the last 10 years here in the City of Worcester and gave back. Do a roll call.
Member Clancy, here. Vice Chair Johnson.
Here.
Member Kamara.
Here.
Member Mailman.
Here.
Member McCullough.
Here.
Member Vanonovic.
Here.
And Mayor Petty.
Here. So the motion is to approve the consent decree. All those in favor, opposed or ordered. Do we need a roll call? Let's do a roll call, because there's someone I need there. We'll do a roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Yes. Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Vanonovic?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Public comment, any member of the public may address the committee. We've got an entity item before the, for two minutes, it's apparent on your agenda. Use your name and see your residence and item number. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Buckley, and I'm a resident of Medway and a teacher for the Worcester Public Schools. In addition to emphatically echoing everything that my colleagues have shared here in prior weeks, I'd like to address the matter of educator preps. Our expired teacher contract states that all elementary classroom teachers are guaranteed only four periods weekly to conduct classroom business that doesn't involve the direct instruction and supervision of students. The professional tasks that fall within this category are too numerous to list and cannot reasonably be handled in this amount of time with fidelity, and it's unreasonable to expect them to be. But specialists like myself aren't even guaranteed that. We can teach seven grades a day, that's seven sets of objectives, seven full-on projects to prep materials for. There's no worksheets, no Chromebooks, just a constant flow of different specialized materials, obtuse and messy materials that need to be organized, distributed, sorted, altered, cleaned, and put away, and oftentimes procured out of our own pockets or with the help of fundraising, all before the next group of eager students is ready to go five minutes later. I taught special education for three years and high school history for 10 years prior to following my dream of becoming an art teacher and have never worked harder than I do now. We have art teachers in the district that are graciously awarded one prep per week and are expected to travel between buildings during their lunch. That's in addition to creating our own curriculum and resources, which cannot feasibly take place during contractual hours, and building relationships with, differentiating for, and monitoring the progress of 500 students on average. I often hear that we don't need to work as hard as we do, but I bet those people haven't heard students as young as third grade say that art class is the only reason they come to school anymore, and I'm sure that music and gym teachers have heard similar. All teaching takes planning and prep that cannot be done simultaneously with instruction and supervision. You would not ask a lawyer to be in court for every billed hour and expect positive results, and you would not schedule any employee in any role for back-to-back meetings all week long with zero time allocated to complete action items and the general responsibilities of their role.
Can you wrap up comments?
Yes. All educators require a daily prep at minimum to do our job with fidelity and without sacrificing our families and our mental health. We all need substantial pay increases, too. Thank you.
Use your name and see your residence.
Chris Brennan. I live in Sturbridge, and I've been teaching at Worcester Technical High School. I'm an English teacher there. Good evening. I'm Chris Brennan. As I said, I've been teaching, I started teaching in Worcester 23 years ago, and I stayed here when I was a young teacher because we were innovative in pedagogy and we paid better than the surrounding districts. Unfortunately, I don't find either of these statements true anymore. A decade of stagnant salary increases, canned teaching programs, excessive testing, technology dependency have smothered our creativity and our efforts to make our schools great. This might also explain our struggle to attract new educators and why we see many of our colleagues leaving our district. In the past 23 years of teaching, I've attained my master's plus 15 plus endless continuing education credits. I've served as a supervising practitioner for many teachers in training. I've also been a mentor and served many other roles advising students. Yet I find myself after 23 years getting my car prepared now to Uber again. You see, my wife and I have always traded off who does the grocery shopping. This past year was usually me. Last week, she ended up coming home outraged about mayonnaise. She held it aloft and shouted at me, "Do you know how much this cost?" $5.99. Her anger was palpable. Last year, she said, "It was $3.99." Now, I'm just an English teacher, but that sounds like it went up by about 50%. So, 2%, 2.5% increases for teachers just won't do. It certainly isn't keeping up with the mayonnaise, or bread, or butter, or gas, or electric, or the cost of my students who are in college, their education. It is also not keeping up with the surrounding districts. Can you also imagine the strain this economy puts on our power professionals who cannot even boast a living wage? Mr. Mayor, Worcester has certainly changed since I moved here in 1985. The Galleria, the Greendale Mall are things of the past. Worcester has a new look.
Can you wrap up your comments?
Just a stone's throw from here, we put in Polar Park. What an excellent investment in the revitalization of Worcester. How on earth can we expect to attract new families, new money to Worcester if we don't invest in our schools?
Thank you. So I want to thank everybody for coming out. Is that the last speaker? Thank everybody for coming out tonight and have a nice Thanksgiving.
I think I have one more.
What's that, one more?
Do I have one more speaker?
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Killerbrew. How you doing?
Residence too, Worcester?
Yes, sir. And I'm a pair professional at Burncote Middle School. So, wanted to come out and just show support for all the pair professionals who are here. Their numbers are growing as far as showing up tonight on these standouts, so just want to give more, show some love to everybody here. Now, what brought me to being a pair professional is, for one, the hours that worked for my, being available for my daughter. However, you know, as we know, the pay is not that great. But we do it for the love. A lot of the talents and the gifts that I have that brought me into the door are what keeps me there, my passion for the students and not necessarily the training. So I find myself a lot of times in positions where even though I don't necessarily have the training, I can be called on to work with just about any student because of the need. You know, we have vacancies, as I know over at Burncote Middle, there's at least three. And probably to really adequately take care of the children, maybe six are needed, you know, and because the pay is so low, it's not attracting enough, it's not, you know, attractive for new blood, but we need it. The kids need more representation. They're happy to see when I walk through the room, you know. They can call me up just about any time to know that I can handle just about anything that they throw, you know, and I'm not unique in that. I'm not unique in that. You know, the training that we have, there's not enough official training for that, for what we do. But as far as the pay, you know, we all eligible probably for social benefits, you know what I mean? And where, and some, I can speak for myself, I'm pretty much at the place where I need to start applying for it. You know, I have two, and I'm sure there's more of us that have maybe three, four, five, or six, well, maybe not six kids, 2022, but we still need to take care of them, and it's not right that we have to work two and three jobs in order to make that happen. Some of us have to get really creative with the timing in order for that to happen. So we're going to continue to show up. I'm glad to see these numbers are growing. So maybe not next week, but the week, the following week, these numbers are going to keep going. So it seems like the thin line between getting what we need and what we, is just the numbers. So it's not that you don't know, it's not that we don't know, maybe this, that, I guess that people, you know that people are not showing up.
Can you wrap up?
Oh, yes, sir. I'll wrap it up right now. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time, and let's keep pushing for the goal here.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Rodriguez-Faye, and I'm resident of Worcester. I just want to share with you, because I was the first school community liaison for the bilingual program when the Worcester Public Schools started. So I've been involved in looking at how our children are treated, and I just want to preface by saying this, I'm a strong spiritual person, believe in Jesus, and what did Jesus say about what we should be doing to our children? And so it breaks my heart when I learn about the report that came out where Latino students are being suspended and expelled 85% higher than white students for doing similar infraction. So one of the things that I find when we hear the saying, the achievement gap, you know what I think the biggest achievement gap is? So our children are graduating from our public school without any knowledge of the history and contribution of indigenous, blacks, and Latino. Our children are not being accepted in the society, valuing our history. So for me, it's been always a challenge. We fought to have a two-way bilingual school, and we finally did. I was, I taught at Chandler-Magnette, and it was wonderful to see white children and black children and Latino in the playground, each trying to share their language. I was teaching Spanish to English five-year-olds, and when I saw them in the playground trying to share the language with each other, and it does break a lot of the, you know, what happens between our children, okay? So for me, I really wish that we in Worcester could make the school system to be a way that our community feels proud, all of us. We all, all I ask is for the system to treat all children with the same humanity that they are.
Thank you.
And I finally want to say, as a teacher, one of the things, I'm done, Joe. The only two profession in this country that have been traditionally held by women are the only ones that corporate America exploits. Teachers are being exploited. Even teachers who have masters and doctorate degree are treated less than, and I really believe, and I may be wrong, if the majority of teachers were male, it would be different.
Thank you, Ruth. I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. We'll close this by the schedule. Okay. We are on From Here to Anywhere Together, the High School Experience. Report to the Superintendent.
So thank you. As the team comes up, tonight's presentation is a follow-up from the presentation that happened a couple of committee meetings ago in terms of our MCAS, where we shared MCAS results and programming associated with it. I want to thank the Teaching and Learning Team for really digging into our data and starting to align strategies of how we're going to move the needle on outcomes, supporting our staff in doing that. We know when we are intentional with what we do and how we lead and support people, our staff, our scholars will achieve anything. And so tonight, you're going to get a glimpse at some of that intentionality, and with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Morris. Thank you.
Through the chair, good evening, everyone. We're happy to be here tonight to share with you the From Here to Anywhere Together, the High School Experience. So today, we hope the, tonight, we hope the outcomes that you walk away with are that you have a better understanding of the overview of the high school accountability indicators. We'll be reviewing our current programming and high school offerings. We also have an opportunity to share with you what we have heard from our students and what they think about the high school experience. And finally, we'll pull it all together with what are our next steps together. So I'm going to turn the next portion of the presentation over to Dr. Sipple.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, School Committee.
Why don't you introduce yourselves again to the panel.
Yeah, so Tim Sipple, and I'm the Executive Director for South Quadrant. As Dr. Morris mentioned, a few weeks ago, we spoke about the accountability measures for the, for the whole district and pointed out that there are additional accountability measures for high schools. We have, in addition to achievement in English, language arts, and math, and science, and student growth in those areas, English language proficiency and chronic absenteeism, you see we also have four-year graduation rate, an extended engagement rate, which looks at a percentage of students who graduate after a fifth year, annual dropout rate, and advanced coursework, which is the percentage of 11th and 12th graders who are taking an AP or a college-level course. And as we shared with you last time, the, for this year, because of the unique circumstances relative to the pandemic, the State Department of Education, of elementary and secondary education, has based this year's accountability percentiles 40% from year one and 60% from year two. And you can see in this, in this slide, in this chart, that for each of the, of the measures, the, depending on the measure, the data was collected, the data, the scores were based, if you will, on a different year. And of course, in 2020, we didn't have, the, the MCAS wasn't administered, and the scores in 2021 were not used for, for high school for that purpose. They were based in 2019. Just want to share some high-level scores or difference in percentages from '21 and '22, and '21 and '20 in certain cases in 2021. And these are four measures, excuse me, these are four measures that obviously are not captured at the middle school or the elementary level. So in advanced coursework, we had a slight decline from '21 to '22. Four-year graduation rate increased slightly from '20 to '21, although it went down slightly for our English learners and former English learners. In extended engagement, we saw a slight increase in that percentage from '19 to '20, and a slight decrease in our annual dropout rate between '20 and '21. And I'll just say that we're continuing to look at these data. We're continuing to look at the fact that these scores that our schools receive are based on percentiles and how each of these metrics compares with high schools across the rest of the Commonwealth. And so, and we'll continue to work with each of our principals and their teams to understand better how these data will affect their scores going forward. And with that, oh, forgot, one more. So the chronic absenteeism, just to mention that in 2019, when that, when that accountability measure was determined, it was based on a overall absenteeism rate of 10%. If a student was absent more than 10% of school days, then they were considered chronically absent. For 2022, and this was true for the elementary and middle schools as well, that threshold was raised to 20% because of the number of students who were absent from school because of COVID. We do anticipate that that threshold will be lowered again to 10% for 2023. With that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Will Foley.
Good evening. I'm Will Foley, Executive Director for the Burncote Quadrant Schools. So I'm going to speak on the secondary opportunities and programs that we offer to our students. So on this slide, you can see that we have a variety of college and career pathways that are available to our secondary students, high school students primarily, and the number of students who are taking advantage of each of those programs. As you can see, they're well-subscribed, and I think that what this slide tells us is that for our, there's something there for all of our high school students. Continuing, we have our alternative and specialized programs with the grade spans that support students at each of the programs, and a description, a bit of a description of which students are most well-fit for each of the programs. And then some of our specialized programs. These specialized programs exist at most of our schools. This is an example of a few that exist at Burkhart High School and at South High School, targeting towards high-achieving students and those interested in fine arts, as well as our two-way dual-language program. I'll turn it over to Dr. Tatum.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Kareem Tatum, I'm the Executive Director for the North Quadrant Schools. And I'm going to speak to, speak to our Student Advisory Council. Last month, October 20th, to be exact, Dr. Manárez, Dr. Morris, and our Executive Directors were able to attend the first Student Advisory Council of the Year, which was held at Burncote High School. It was a wonderful experience as we were able to meet and engage with our students around some very important and meaningful discussion about their high school experiences. Each one of our high schools are represented on the council, and it is our goal to ensure that we are providing our high school students with a voice in relation to issues that they feel are important. During our time with students, we asked them to focus on a few things. We first asked them to put themselves in the superintendent's position and determine what their initial steps would be to improve the high school experience in the Worcester Public Schools, and I can tell you, they greatly enjoyed that. We also asked students to identify both the strengths of our district as well as areas that they feel that we need to improve upon. And lastly, we asked students to highlight the pressures, both internal and external, that accompany their high school experience. In terms of the first steps, students expressed a need and desire for more opportunities to engage in arts, sports, and after-school clubs. They also believed that as a district, we have to focus more on providing our students with experiences related to real-world life. They spoke about college loans, credit cards, and balances, and things of that nature. Our students are very intrigued about the possibility of being able to participate in internships that are relative to their interests, and they understand and welcome the need for our district to focus on the health and wellness of our students, faculty, and staff. In terms of the strengths of our system, students shared that they felt that it was an asset to attend school with such a diverse student body. They expressed that they have had many caring and supportive teachers throughout the academic journey, and they feel that their learning communities are extremely positive. Lastly, students shared that there are many different programs and offerings in our system, and stated while they want more of these opportunities, the programs that are currently in place have proven to be an asset to their success. And at this time, I'm going to pass it over to Mrs. Kelly, who will talk about the areas of improvement and the pressures that our students reported experiencing.
Hi, everybody. My name's Ellen Kelly. I'm the Executive Director of the Doherty Quadrant. As the students worked together on these questions, it was so great to watch them getting to know each other and getting, realizing they had so many things in common even though they attended different high schools. It was fun watching them making connections and working together on this activity. So many times, I would hear the students say, "Oh, yeah, that happens at my school, too." For the prompt of opportunities to improve, the students took this very seriously. Their answers were thoughtful and similar to the responses at the adult forums we've all been attending. Many students articulated that diversity was the strength of Worcester Public Schools, and diversity of teachers, staff, and administrators was one of the most common responses for an opportunity for improvement. The final question posed, or the last one I'm going to address tonight, is what are some of the pressures you face from adults in your life? This question really brought the groups together. Many felt the pressure of getting into college, as well as college possibly being the only path, was a pressure. Balancing life between school, work, extracurricular activities, and such was also a very common theme in all groups. I just want to close again, I want to express how impressed I was with all the students. They were engaged, they were reflective, and they were honest. They were so excited to be proud of, to be part of this Student Advisory Council. It was probably one of the best meetings I've been to all year, except for tonight.
And finally, I'm going to try to connect all of the dots. So we begin with accountability. So on the left-hand side of this slide, you see some key accountability indicators: attendance, achievement, advanced coursework, annual dropout, four-year graduation, extended engagement. I know we've talked about these before, and all of you are aware of what each of these mean. So the second So the second part of our presentation, we talked about, a lot about our program offerings in different ways we tried to meet the diverse needs and wants and desires of our students. And lastly, we asked our kids, "What do you think?" And so, we'll start with attendance. So we all know that we lost a lot of time at school last year because of recovering from COVID, and lost learning time was important to consider as we planned for this year. So we asked our kids, "What would make you want to go to school more?", and what they said were, "Relationships are key. We like to go to a school where we feel accepted, where we feel understood and cared for. We like to go to school where we believe that our teachers understand what we need. We don't like to go to school when we are bothered and reminded and monitored about our attendance. We do like to go to school where we're encouraged and invited to attend." Those attitudes were preferred. So in that spirit, we are really working hard on developing and building and designing a sense of belonging in all of our schools. You've heard a lot about that already, but it seems to be taking root, because our attendance rates, they're, they're trending in the right direction. So achievement, as you know, really important. It's three to one on our MCAS ratios. Achievement counts the most. So for achievement, we want, we asked our kids, "What would help you achieve at a high level?", and they told us, you heard from Dr. Tatum, you probably, and you heard from Mr. Foley and Mrs. Kelly, that they want learning that helps them get ready for their futures. So they talk about things like internships, get credentials, real-life learning. We heard about financial literacy over and over again. They talked a lot about great teachers. They learned the best from great teachers. And they all spoke, they really enjoyed when principals and assistant principals were involved and aware of their learning. So to that end, you're going to see that we have vision of a graduate. You've heard of Portrait of a Graduate, but we are changing it, rebranding it, and refreshing it. We're including more voices. And in that, we would like to create a framework for what future learning should be, what our kids need to know in five, 10, 15 years, and shaping our instruction and our core work in our schools around that goal. You heard about the great teachers, the outcomes from great learning in classrooms. So our goal here is to ensure that every student, no matter where you go to school, has a high-quality opportunity, great teachers, and great learning. And finally, we're going to work really closely with our principals and assistant principals about supervision and instruction, giving feedback to our educators so that they understand ways to take great, good to great, and continue to ensure that our kids are getting the best education that Worcester Public Schools can offer. Advanced coursework is another indicator that we pay close attention to, because advanced coursework is really getting our kids ready for future learning. So again, we heard from our kids, they want future-oriented courses, like get them ready for their next step. Even though they may not know what their next step is, they want opportunities to experience it in school. So that's what increased opportunities at all levels means. It means that trying out a lot of different things to find your way, or find what you may want to decide to do after you graduate from high school. And also, increased electives and enrichment options. We heard so much about art, music, dance, clubs, clubs about things I didn't even know what they were about. And also, we heard an awful lot about art, I mean, I'm sorry, athletics, and sports, and wellness, and self-care. So we, we, we have a wellness task force that we're continuing to talk about with our community. So we're hoping to bring some great things into that that will help bring well-balanced opportunities for us students, so that they can access these advanced coursework. And increased rigorous coursework. So what does increased rigorous work, coursework look like? It means that we are providing opportunities at every school, no matter where you go. So if there's a, a course in a school that is engaging and interesting to you, that we have that available for you. So high school can be hard, and getting through it sometimes in four years is very challenging. So we have to have the adults around our students and our scholars to get them through. And we asked our kids, "What do you think you need?", and they said that they needed some mentoring and support and coaching. But they really need an environment in which they can thrive. A school that is, is good for all, and a, a school that is good for all will include culturally responsive pedagogy. And that means increasing opportunities for, of course, high achievement, high engagement, but honoring culture, and honoring the perspective of students and what they bring to the learning. And also a place where restorative justice practices exist. And often, one small mistake should not derail a, a student's efforts to persevere through high school. So how do we create environments in school that are restorative, and also appropriately assisting students get through the struggles and challenges of high school? I don't know anybody that went to high school that didn't have a few bumps in the road, and so we need to be sure that we work with our students to get them over those bumps in, all the way through to graduation. So like I said, four-year graduation rate is another indicator that we look at with accountability, and sometimes getting through in four years is hard. And sometimes, schools don't really match what kids need. So we want to hear more from our kids. So we heard from them that they want to have a voice, they want to have a say in some of the ways that we organize for learning. So our student advisories were important to them. Having an opportunity of two-way communication back and forth to teachers, to administration, so that they could have a say in planning and working on the ways to make these four year, four years as meaningful as possible. Engagement. I spoke earlier about people learn best from people that they think care for them. So creating those engaging environments in places where kids want to be is a key strategy to ensuring that we can work towards a four-year graduation rate for kids, if possible. And mentoring and coaching, if you're not making progress, we should have adults in place to help you, help you decide, help you make the next step or make a better decision. We've all made mistakes, and I think having adults who have made mistakes are great opportunities for kids to learn from those mistakes. And finally, extended engagement. Not everybody gets through in four years. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer, and that is okay. But what we have to make sure is that what we have to offer, make sure, we make sure that high-quality opportunities exist for all students in every school, no matter where you go. And so we will be conducting some program reviews of our secondary offerings, based on all of this information that we, we got from our students, and all the data that Dr. Sipple talked about, so that we're able to reshape some of the high school experience. So the next time we give this report, the high school experience, we may have some really interesting data and interesting ideas and thoughts from our students to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we all set? Member McCullough?
Thank you, and thank you so much for the report. It's really nice to kind of see the holistic approach that's being looked at, and getting our student feedback, and knowing how we can tie it in to their advancement. And I kind of, you know, I took down my notes, how do we balance restorative with rigor, right? So it's like, how do we create this welcoming environment and encouraging environment, but also providing high-quality education, and having our students buy into the effort that will go along with that, the efforts that go along with that, and doing it for all of our students? One of the things that was mentioned under the special programs is the AVID program, and that is something that we have talked about several times over the years, and through the chair, to whoever might be able to answer this. Is there any plan to increase the schools that are participating in the AVID program? That had been brought up. I know it's only 19 of the schools now, which is an increase of where it had been, but it is really an opportunity for students, regardless of which school or program they're in, to have the opportunity to kind of get that, you know, that student that might be falling in the middle, or just at any level of where they are in their education, get some additional skill sets that are really valuable.
Through the chair, there is never a cap on AVID. So typically, the school leader or principal brings to the attention of the professional learning curriculum office that they would like to start an AVID cohort. So we have AVID in all of our secondary schools, and quite a few elementary schools. And I would agree with you, that is a great program, and it has served the schools, they have taken that on very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Kamara?
Thank you. To the chair, thank you so much for this presentation, everyone. My question, just following up with Molly, is about Project Lead the Way. I realized, I just recently came in touch with this, with this program, and in the same lines of how can we get all programs across the various schools, the quadrants, whatever, so that all kids can be in the same program, even the goddess college, that's something else that just cringed me, to be honest. How can we get all of these programs across the board for all our kids? Because it's so, it's so important. Because I didn't, I also didn't see Project Lead the Way as one of the, the contents in here. Is there also a reason why?
Through the chair.
Dr. Sipple.
So Project Lead the Way is, it's a curriculum that's been used at our Engineering Technology Academy, which is a Chapter 74 program at Doherty for a number of years, and recently has been piloted at Forest Grove Middle School to prepare students for STEM experiences and an ETA, which is in the same quadrant, and then also, I believe, for elementary schools. It's been piloted within the Doherty Quadrant also, as part of a STEM pathway. The, the course, at the high school level, the courses are very, very in-depth. I mean, they're, they're full, four-year courses that are engineering-specific, and so there is not, it was previously used at Worcester Tech in their engineering academy or, or engineering program, but they've since used alternate curriculum. So that is possible, that Project Lead the Way curriculum could be used in other schools as well, but again, the experience that we've had with it at the middle school level and at the elementary level has been very recent, and it's been of a pilot nature that was funded by a grant, I believe. So it's certainly possible that it could be expanded elsewhere.
Thank you. And even to that conversation, it's about the pathways, because I understand that students can be in Project Lead the Way, or these programs from as early as elementary, middle school, and they are in it through high school, and then they're in it until they can even go to college, especially that one program. So if we are kind of creating that, that pathways in that, so one quadrant, the Doherty Quadrant, but then students who are in the northeast quad, Doherty in the east, no, no, west. So if we're doing this, I saw, my kind of thing is, how can we also, I know it's a pilot, right? But I also know that Project Lead the Way has been in Worcester for a couple of years at the high school level. And so during one of my visits, I, I went to, you know, some of the, the other schools on East Middle, and I realized that even some of the, the STEM-based programs that was once there needs to, and I think I would like to, you know, get your feedback to Dr. Tatum, in terms of like, you know, STEM-based programs within those quadrants, that should be also tied into leading, helping students be on a pathway.
If I could, before you respond, just the, the Engineering Technology Academy at Doherty, like all of our Chapter 74 programs, are open to all students across the district. And, and just like Worcester Technical High School, is open to all students across the district. And since last year, it uses the same admissions policy that Worcester Tech uses as far as a tiered lottery. So while Forest Grove Middle School and those schools in the Doherty Quadrant are the ones that have had the pilot experience with Project Lead the Way, which is very different from the engineering courses at, at Doherty, students across all four quadrants have the opportunity to apply to Worcester Tech, obviously, but then also to the Chapter 74 program at Doherty, in addition to the vocational programs at South and at North.
So I guess like, because I, I understood that, too, from my, my research in the schools, but in, to that point as well, that if we have students on one side of the quadrant have a pathway, right, they, you can, you are sucked into something, you have been educated, and you can get into Doherty, you know, maybe easily. Other students that may not have that same pathway also may, maybe struggle if they want to go to Doherty. So I, I understand what we currently have, but I think I've asked this question even the previous administration, how, how can we look at bringing programs to be across the board? I don't think my child that is on the east side should travel afar distant on the west side to be in a specific program. So that's one of my questions. And that point is actually a sticking point for me, in addition to the goddess college, too, to, to, because I was a part of that program, and the fact that we're selecting the smartest kid, I don't believe that. I believe that every kid has equal, they're smart in their own specific ways, and we should be opening up that program, too.
Member Kamara?
Absolutely agree with you. The administrative director that the, of College and Career that the committee approved a couple of committee meetings ago, that position, their biggest charge is going to be to look at all of our pathways and offerings across the district, and, and work diligently to get a continuum of program offerings, no matter where you happen to live in the community. And so that will be the goal. That doesn't mean that every quadrant may have the same exact pathway, just because we want to be able to allocate resources. But there should be a baseline. There should be a base that everybody gets access to, and then some more specialized. Maybe the North Quadrant might choose to have something more like, because I've seen evidence of this already in the North Quadrant, coding and computer science, and we can, we can further augment and further develop that K through 12th grade. And so by the time you get into North, you have some great opportunities in different fields within computer science. So those can be some examples, but we need to, to your point, take a step back, do a full analysis of it, see what offerings there are, where do we have some very gaping holes, and what are we going to do to fill those, and then start addressing that, both with resources, with staffing, and with programming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else say thank you? Member Colonel Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I, I do just want to acknowledge we have several high school students here, so please don't be shy. Could someone please just, through the chair of administration, define extended engagement for us, please?
Dr. Sipple?
Through the chair. My understanding is it's the, there's a, a four-year graduation rate, and then the fifth-year graduation rate.
Okay, so that's effectively, we're then sort of, it's that, how are we making sure we're, we're following up and bringing students through, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I, I just, I, I wanted to call that out, and also the advanced coursework, because that plus chronic absenteeism were the things that changed under the, the new federal law. And those were things that, that Massachusetts chose to include. And so I think, I think it behooves us to pay some, some additional attention to that. I think we spend a lot of time on MCAS scores, and I think that there, there is some messaging from the state, and even then from the federal government, that those are some things that are, that, that matter, too. I did also just want to flag that, as much as it may be a bad or good idea, the, the Board of Ed did start talking about indicators of post-secondary engagement at this week's board meeting, too. So that seems like something to potentially pay attention to. I wondered, in terms, at some point, by the way, I'd be interested in having a conversation about the advanced coursework by subgroup, because I know that, you know, that's one where, at least from my initial look at our accountability, we see a real breakdown among students by, really, across the demographic groups, kind of regardless. So I think it would probably behoove us to have a conversation about that. I did wonder, related to that advanced coursework, do we ever, as a district, do any work on looking at, since that's college coursework and AP, the AP scores that come back from students, and where those come from? Through the chair to administration.
Dr. Sipple.
Through the chair. So we have, well, I can just say, since I've, I've been with the district, I don't believe we've looked at scores and where they've come from, per se. Although we do look at the full, obviously, each school gets their scores and looks at them, school by school. We have, though, looked at data, to your earlier point, with regards to which students and which student groups are participating, and which students are doing well in both, in AP courses. And in terms of early college, which students, which student groups, which schools are represented in a proportional manner to their, to the representation in the overall population in, in that program also. And so that's something, again, to Dr. Menares's earlier point, that we see as being a very critical piece of the review of the programs that we mentioned earlier, and also the overall concern for equity that Member and also the overall concern for equity that Member Kamara and Dr. Menares mentioned.
Okay. So to that end, let me then flag, I guess, two things on that. The first is that we did go through, and I think it predates almost, well, in terms of central administration, almost everyone here. There was this effort to sort of push an all AP, everyone was going to take an AP thing, which I'm not convinced well-served our students. So I just, I feel a little burned by that experience and want to make sure we don't go down that road. My sense is that partly as a result of that, we may potentially have AP experiences that aren't necessarily advanced placement. And I say that because, we can like it or not, but the course is designed to take, to end up with you taking a test, and you're supposed to be learning how to do that well. And in some cases, I don't think we're doing it particularly well. That's why I ask about the courses and the schedules. I know that there is internal scuttlebutt in some high schools of you don't want to take X because it means that you won't get a good, a good score. In terms of two of the programs, I guess I want to flag two things. I have, I have always had concerns about our credit recovery program and whether or not that's well-serving our students in terms of if they actually are getting what they really are supposed to have in order to have a high school diploma. And then, this is one that's gotten me in lots of trouble before, but I'm going to say it anyway. I don't think that we're necessarily using the resource of Worcester Technical High School effectively in terms of reaching the students who actually want to have what Worcester Tech offers. And I know that the acceptance question is, remains in TLSS. I would really like us to more thoroughly explore that question. Because in terms of the resources that we have as available to us as a district, I'm not convinced that we as a district are using the resources we have to most effectively serve our student body through that, among other things. The other one that I would flag, by the way, is what we persist in referring to as Hanover Insurance Academy for the Arts, which personally, I don't think I've actually seen a donation, so I'm not really sure why we're still calling it that. I don't actually think that it's actually designed for gifted and talented students. It's based on MCAS scores. That was never designed to be a gifted and talented evaluation. And so that. The only additional point that I'll make, Mr. Chair, which I was actually going to note later on with one of our grants, is we have students who are asking for more arts enrichment, sports, and clubs. Something that does continue to bother me is we do put budgetary resources towards athletics, and while we should, we don't put budgetary resources towards kind of really any other extracurricular activities. And I just would flag that for my colleagues as we move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. A member, Melma.
I cannot say something. On the, I guess I'd like to under, you know, we have 2,100 kids in vocational programs. Our high schools probably represent how many kids? Well, seven or eight thousand? That's, oh, we've come a long way, baby, as they say. And I think that we should understand several things about the vocational programs, that the programs at our other schools are not what Worcester Tech is, what a, what a Chapter 74 school is. And I sometimes worry that parents don't understand that, and kids don't understand that, and families don't understand that. I think it seems in the planning of the new schools, we've taken good care to try to make sure that we're offering other programs. I think we always have to review the programs in our vocational school that are happening. So I'm just curious if the suggestion would be that, you know, when we get around to that new Burnco School, that that should be a vocational school as well, so that we can accept more kids in a full vocational program, of which I would probably be a fan of, but will probably add hundreds of millions of dollars to our budget. So, and, and the idea about, for a lifetime, I feel like I've listened to this, these kids should get into the vocational programs because they're for these kids. And I just really question who's identifying these kids that should be plumbers or electricians or some of the other fancier trades that we have now. So I guess that, through the chair, that's a question back to my colleague.
I think that was a question for me. There are actually districts that are choosing to use student interest as part of the admission process. That was something that was actually allowed under the new admission program. And I think, to my colleague's sort of ongoing point of there is absolutely not only a community need for, but a richness to a community that encourages people to grow up to be, and I say this advisedly, electricians and plumbers and HVAC technicians and automobile mechanics. I am not convinced that that's the messaging that we even give our students who are applying. In fact, I know it's not, as a parent, to Worcester Tech. That isn't, those are not necessarily even overlapping student populations, let alone the message that we actually deliver to them as a community. So to your, to your ongoing point of not everyone should, not everyone needs to go to college, not only do we not say that, we actually don't, in the way in which we approach our programming, demonstrate that that is a possibility for students whose interests might only not lie in college, but might otherwise actually have their needs being met by the district.
Okay, anybody, just identify yourself and name in the school.
My name's Emma and I go to South High. I wanted to speak on the point of the accelerated programs in high school. So I'm a part of the Goddard Scholars Academy. And six years ago, when I was accepted, it was based on my MCAS scores. I don't know if that's still the case. I haven't heard of any major changes to the process. But I know when I got accepted, my MCAS scores were, I think, on the threshold of, you know, the, whatever it's called now, I think like the advanced one. And I know myself included, I am not a good test taker. And I feel that, you know, in a way, the admission process to programs like the Goddard Scholars Academy or like the Hanover Academy at Burnco should be, you know, relooked at and revised, because test scores don't necessarily define a person. And there are students that, you know, don't test well, but still should have the opportunity to receive those advanced classworks and courses and opportunities that those programs provide. Because we try for MCAS, but, you know, some students just aren't like the type of students that can test well and score well enough to be considered for those programs.
Thank you. I wasn't a good test taker either, so I understand what you're saying. Okay, so thank you. Did a great job. Look forward to the next report. Thank you. So we are... So do we have any student advisory committee items? Emma?
Do we need to accept and file the report? Don't we need to do something with the report?
Oh, the file out? Yeah, so the record measures the file, although it's in favor of postal audit. Emma, do you want to say something? No? You're all set? Okay. I will say everybody's, why don't you identify yourself, the other students anyways, while you're here. This your name and the school you're from?
Hello, my name is Maria. I go to the Gerald Kramer Center.
Welcome. Thank you. Yep.
Sorry. So I was going to talk about something that's been going on at my high school recently. So there have been several instances where comments have been said to students of color at my school by faculty that were inappropriate and kind of out of line. And I had been talking to those students, and I understand that, you know, sensitivity trainings had been established in the past. But myself included and our student body feels that these sensitivity trainings should be implemented more, because students shouldn't have to come to me to bring it up at these, at the committee meetings that they feel, you know, unsafe or uncomfortable in a, in a learning environment, which is supposed to, you know, provide a community in a sense of, you know, safe, a feeling of being safe for those students. So I was going to ask if it was possible to implement sensitivity trainings into our schools. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Appreciate it. I know we have processes in places at the schools where students hopefully can report to the principal or somebody in administration, so hopefully that happens. If it doesn't happen, you always can call myself or the superintendent and school community members. This your name and it's for us in school?
I'm Kendra, and I attend Worcester Technical High School. So I kind of did just want to build on to what my peer Emma brought up. I totally agree with the sensitivity training thing, because I know it's been an ongoing issue that, you know, especially just Worcester in general, it's a very diverse population, like very diverse compared to like surrounding cities and towns. And it's just rather unfortunate that our staff, administration, and faculty do not reflect that. I have not always been in the Worcester public school system, because I attended a charter school. I went to Seven Hills before I attended Worcester Tech. And Seven Hills was a rather smaller school. There was ninety, there was about ninety students in my grade, so everyone kind of knew each other, very diverse, and the staff like reflected that. And it really sucked. My first year of high school, I came in, and the first time I came in person, because you know, it was COVID time, I experienced being like the second person of color in my class. I've attended tech for three years now, and I can't say that I've had a teacher that looked like me. And it, it's, it's a problem, because mentally it's draining and it's challenging, because we need admin, we need faculty, we need staff that don't want to understand something, but actually do understand something. Because when challenges like Emma just brought up right now happen, we need those administrators, we need those faculty members who, as I said, genuinely understand it and don't want to understand it. Thank you.
Well said, thank you. And we do have programs in place, we're trying to put in the place anyways, working with the colleges, universities, and the schools for that happen. So we have people who want to go into the profession. Maybe you want to be a teacher someday and come back to Worcester Public Schools. Okay, thank you, everyone. Appreciate your comments. I'm sorry, Member Kamara?
Thank you so much, the Chair. I do want to talk about what Emma mentioned with regards to what it seems, I think your comment was about, also was about that they can report to the schools. And I want to connect the two and then connect a third dot with my item that I filed a couple, a while back, which should now be allowable for students to know that they can report such, such incidences via a setup that we have in our system. So I want to understand perhaps like where is this development? And has it been infiltrated into public schools? And maybe we can have our students, you know, maybe help to advocate and spread the awareness of that through our, our public schools, so that all students can know, and educators too. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point. Okay, so we're going to move on. Two dash two nine five, to consider approval of $22,000, Youth Reach Returning Grant from the Mass Cultural Council, fiscal year 17726. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Hang on, hang on. Miss Novak? Member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a couple of questions. So this is actually exactly what we were just talking about, although not just high school, but also elementary and middle school in terms of extracurricular activities that are music-related, being grant-funded. I just wanted to better understand, and this is partly due to making sure that I'm actually understanding our commitment on the, the general fund side through the Chair to Administration on the fourth page. In terms of, there's, there's a delineation of what's coming from grants, about $13,000 or about $14,000. And then there's the, this additional funding, which is, says it's city funding. Can we understand better through the Chair to Administration? Where exactly is that funding coming from? I understand that it's funding that we've actually already set aside.
What's up? Come on.
Come on up and turn up on a turn over. Welcome, Ms. Leach.
Hi, go ahead.
You're going to have to hit it again, I think. Hit the button again.
Hit the button, okay, I'm hitting the button. Thank you. The sirens are welcoming me. It's beautiful. Hi.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Lisa Leach. I'm the Curriculum Liaison for Performing Arts. I work with the Office of Curriculum and Professional Learning. I represent 64 teachers teaching 26,000 students. So the Worcester Unites Youth Reach Grant, you want to know where the money's coming from?
We have where the money's coming from. So appreciate the Mass Cultural Council, it's thanks to them for appreciating it, for, for understanding the program. No, I was actually, what I was trying to do, you're, you're doing some calculations here in terms of funding that effectively has already been allocated by the school committee, as I understand it, part through the FY23 budget. And then the grant funding, which is largely paying, it looks like, for the youth coaches, workshops, t-shirts, and so forth. I'm trying to figure out where exactly we had the money set aside already in the general fund for this program.
So there's 15.5 in the, it's a line item in the school committee, in the district budget, for after-school ensembles and lessons program.
Okay. And the, that, but, and this calculation does not include transportation? Because I understand this, this has included transportation in the past, correct?
We have juggled the money as efficiently as possible. We have, before the pandemic, we were able to fund two buses. We are in talks right now with transportation to see if that, that money needs to be rearranged, because we would love to have more transportation to the program and home from the program. But we haven't finalized those talks yet, so.
And then if I'm understanding the, the second part of what you have here, in terms of effectively, this is sort of the what's left after you run the school year program?
Session program, yeah.
That, there's the, here's what's left, we're setting aside towards the summer, and then attempting to come up with the rest of what looks like $8,800 in order to make sure that the summer program gets run?
Yes. So we, we try to save $8,800, that's about. Our, our summer program is a seven-day, full-day program for any student in Worcester who's ever played an instrument or sometimes just looked at one. It's usually held at North High School. Emma is one of our former coaches. And so we try to bring in as many specialists as we can, so that the, you know, we have a band teacher during the regular school program, but in the summer, we bring in a flute specialist and a clarinet specialist and a trumpet person, so that they get a little more one-on-one instruction and support. But basically, we look at the budget and see who we can afford.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Hey, I'm sorry, Member Kamara?
Yeah, I'm sorry, to the Chair. Pardon my lack of inability to find this number. How many students have been volunteering in this program?
So prior to the pandemic, the, during school session, which we used to run October to April, had somewhere in the neighborhood of 75 students in it. We meet two days a week, three to five, Wednesdays and Thursdays. The program is taught by our high school students who are paid, like Emma. And that's one of the ways that we're trying to build our own cohort of future educators, is that we make them come back. So we have about, the last two years, we've had about 50 students, 40 to 50.
During the school semester?
During the school session. Summer is over 100. We had about 115 last summer for our seven days.
And so did I also get you clearly that you take students who don't know how to play any?
We usually, we, so we have about 900 students in the elementary. We usually, we, so we have about nine hundred students in the elementary program right now that are learning to play an instrument. So we are trying, the program was started by a student at Burncoe High School in two thousand and fifteen. It was his senior capstone project, Eli Rivera Sanchez. And he wanted to provide those students who are getting lessons with the ensemble experience. You know, it's nice to learn how to play the flute, but you wanna play it in a band.
Right.
Right? So in two thousand and fifteen, we had very little offerings in the middle school and almost no ensemble experience in the elementary school. Worcester Arts Magnet School was the only school that had a band or orchestra program. So Eli saw that need and he built this program based on El Sistema to support youth development, but also to get those kids playing together. So I need to go back to your original question. I'm sorry. But, so that was, that was the impetus for it. Uh, now we're lucky enough that all the middle schools have ensembles, which is
Wonderful.
Just a, a miracle. Um, as far as I'm concerned, and it's really wonderful to see more and more kid, students have the opportunity to play.
Right. And I was really um excited to see, cause at Woodland Academy of Claremont, they do have a band.
Yes.
And that was um exciting to see that.
So in addition to our students, our teachers, Worcester Public Schools teachers, teaching instrumental music, we also have the Neighborhood Strings Program that works with the New Citizens Center at Clark Street School, as well as Woodland Academy.
And I think we're making our way into like um alternative schools.
Yes, yeah, we had the, I'm sorry, yes, yeah. We had the Worcester Arts Explorers Camp this summer, which was really fabulous and we had we were able to bring in students from lots of our schools and we're running our elementary instrumental program with five point three full teach, time teaching equivalent, so they're seeing nine hundred students. So in twenty-six schools, so just need a little more and we can get everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Okay, we'll have a roll call on this. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Pettit?
Yes. Consider approve the thirty-five thousand dollars parent-child support grant from the Public Stone Foundation. Member uh Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I appreciate that this is effectively part of the ongoing coordination that we're doing in the early childhood end of things um with some of the, the family childcare in the city. I'm just trying to better understand exactly what it is that we're doing with the funding because my, it, it, it looks like this is Worcester Public School staff that we already employ. Is this additional time um that we're funding through the grant? And I, I felt a little unclear from the description as to what exactly it was going to do, they were going to do once they were there through the chaired administration.
Who drew the charts draw?
I think there's someone online.
Who? Oh, am I?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Beth. Thank you.
Great. Um, hi, I'm Beth Feats. I'm coordinator of Worcester Family Partnership, um, which oversees the Parent Child Plus Grant in Worcester. Um, we are part of the Worcester Public Schools funded by a grant through the Mass Department of Early Education and Care, um, but we're actually head start staff.
Yes.
Um, so for this grant, which is actually a continuation project, um, we visit family childcare centers, we go twice a week for twenty-four weeks and we bring different curriculum materials to help them enhance what they're currently doing curriculum-wise. Um, staff are there for forty-five minutes each visit. So we bring a book the first time we go um and introduce that to the family's childcare provider um and read it with the children. The second time we go back, the same week, we ask the family childcare provider to read the book to the children and we coach and model how that happens. We then also provide activities based on the book um that she would do the next week. And we go back a second week to coach or help her through. And I say her, most of them are female, um, but I don't mean to be exclusive. Um, the different activity options. So the staff who are doing the program are all Worcester Family Partnership staff who are getting additional hours to do this. Or one is a full-time staff person who a part of her staff salary comes out of this. And we go um twice a week for twenty-four weeks and provide books and toys in the setting. And also the books are sent home with the children after they have been used in the childcare center.
Great, thank you. So it sounds like then effectively what we're doing is providing a combination of professional development for the early childhood centers and enrichment activities, as well as books for the children who are actually at those centers. Is that a good summary through the chair?
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Pettit?
Yes. Okay, we have the response administration request update the community on the Worcester Public Schools and COVID.
Thank you through the chair committee. You should have a copy of this this evening in front of you, so I'll go through the numbers. Keep in mind, this is really only a week's worth of numbers. It's substantially less. I will start with the Burncoe Quadrant with the positive cases for students. We had five. For staff, we had three. Student attendance is ninety-one point sixty-one percent and staff was ninety point twenty-four percent. Dority um quadrant, eleven students, six staff. Nine, student attendance ninety point seventeen percent and staff attendance ninety-one point seventy percent. The North Quadrant, we have six students last week, um, or actually this week. Uh, three staff, nine, uh, student attendance ninety-one point ninety-nine percent. The staff attendance ninety point ninety-seven percent. The South Quadrant, eight students positive, nine staff positive. Student attendance was ninety point eighty-two percent. Staff attendance was ninety point seventy-three percent. So district-wide, this, this, since November tenth through November sixteenth, there were thirty students in total. That's eighty-seven less than the la, or eighty-seven less than the last report, but also um, last report was three weeks worth, but there's still a significant drop. And the staff was twenty-six, sixty-six less than last reported. And then district-wide attendance is definitely up ninety-one point fourteen percent and the staff attendance was ninety-one point twenty-four percent. Um, we'll see what this looks like at our next committee meeting, which will be after Thanksgiving.
What's the uh, this curious, are we tracking flu in the Worcester Public Schools or?
Mayor, I don't wanna tell you inaccurately.
No, it's fine.
Hundred percent sure. We are um starting to track RSV.
Yeah, RSV, yeah.
Yes, we are starting to track that.
That'd be interesting. Have we given out the vaccines this year, do you think, on the, the flu shots?
We did do, yes.
We did that, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Member Mailman?
We had a quick question on this side of the room. Where is tech in, in the quadrants?
They get included in um Burncoe, I believe, because yes, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
It's in the Burncoe quadrant?
Because um, Mr. Foley's under there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll hold out for the next meeting. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Uh, to support the feasibility of extending lunchtime in the secondary schools by at least ten minutes. Member Johnson?
As it reads.
Refer to stand committee on teaching and learning. All those in favor, opposed or ordered? Uh, request that the administration work with the city corps office to find alternative polling locations that are not within the Worcester public buildings. Uh, member Clancy?
Thank you. So through the chair to the administration, and I know um we actually have a similar item that's still in joint committee um with the council. And I know that the administration um has let us know that you are also working on this, but it came back to me after the most recent election um hearing from teachers um and parents regarding some safety concerns at some of our schools that are being utilized as polling locations. And then I have spoken with some administration also who are concerned with the disruption um on arrival and dismissals times for our students at these locations also. So I am just asking that we keep, continue to do the work um with the city to try to find alternative polling location, voting locations for our next election season. Thank you.
Nico's gonna love you.
Nico's aware of this.
I'm only kidding, but uh, it's very complicated in the sense, but something we should look at and maybe we shouldn't even look at, I know, another day off the Worcester Public Schools and open up the schools to the neighborhoods for voting. Something to look at, something to think about.
So that's something that I hope we're looking at, but I know that prior to the pandemic, we weren't utilizing the locations at, for the, for our voting. We had alternate locations instead of the schools.
Yeah, I think Nelson Place was used because it was secured and uh, these made some changes this year there too also.
Um, through the chair, I will say I do vote at Nelson Place and they did a great job. Um, it was staff with um the Worcester Police and they had one entrance for, for one way to get in and one way to get out and it was very secure, I will say that. So I do thank the city for that, but I think it's, you know, we should continue to look for alternative sites.
Okay, thank you. So refer that to administration, pride in doing so. Uh, member Mailman?
Could I offer maybe an amendment that um, you know, this is the, this question is in the negative form and I, we all received concerns from some parents about voting, but um, I'm gonna guess there's people out there that, that are okay with voting in the schools, so um, I just, so I don't know what kind of an amendment I would offer to this item. Looking for alternative schools, um, is, do we, must we, I guess?
Must we want?
Well, what, you know, is it really a detriment to have voting in the schools?
That's, I think, I think that's why I'm gonna refer to the administration.
Okay, so you think this is clear enough?
Yeah.
It's, so it's not just a, okay, thank you. It's not, we wanna find alternative locations to get them out of the schools. We wanna review the whole procedure.
Yeah, but I think one of the issues would be getting them out of the public schools and uh, but also there's another become another solution, work with the Elections Commission.
Thank you.
Cause it's not, this is, this is not an easy process because we can't find places because they have to be accessible. And uh, one of the problems with the buildings we've been throwing, we have moved out of a lot of voting precincts in the past because they haven't been accessible to people to be able to enter the buildings. And uh, the newer schools seem to be alternative entrances where the older schools, there's only one entrance to the schools in most cases. Uh, member Kamara?
Thank you. Um, I also wanna say that I vote at a school too in my district, um, North High. Um, and I wanna say that when I walk in there to vote, I'm extremely excited to vote. Um, the fact that not only it's in a school, but it's in a school where we also teach civics education, which I was, I would, so I, I, my, um, where I'm going with this is that I, on to what um, a member Millman just mentioned, I think it'll be the best for us, for us to look at the safety, if there's any safety implications for arts, for us to understand that fully, but I do think it also benefits the community. Um, seeing community people going into the, in our public schools and voting in areas where kids are secluded. Um, uh, but then also, I remember this was also an item on our joint committee with um the Education Subcommittee on City Council.
Yep.
And um, we also, in addition to this conversation, we also spoke about for the city, Mr. Mayor, to look at all the diverse um areas um where diverse people congregate um for a polling location too. So I think that will be um very, an appreciated thing to have Nico.
Take a look at, Mr. Vangeli? Yeah, years ago, it used to be all in the, all in the schools. And because of safety concerns, we closed every school precinct and uh, then we became too complicated and we built the new schools. This came an easier process, so. Something to look at, give the administration and uh, also like the work with the Elections Commission and Mr. Vangeli. And uh, so refer to administration. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Uh, to talk policy language governing district engagement with the Worcester Police Department. Um, member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this was, uh, member Millman referenced this last week and um, it came up as of course, two weeks ago in our last update on the um MOU. Um, as my colleagues are well aware, we're about a year in on the change of the relationship between the Worcester Public Schools and the Worcester Police Department. And while there's been um ongoing and valiant efforts to hammer out legal language, um, that has so far not resulted in something that's moving forward. Um, and I know that a number of us share a concern that um the district doesn't actually have any language governing um its own staff when it comes to this relationship. Um, and when it comes to governing the staff in terms of policy, um, that's the purview of the Worcester School Committee. So there is uh model language available nationally. I know administration's aware of that. Um, my request is that this go um to governance with um some recommendation from administration in terms of what kinds of language we should be looking at. Um, I know that member Clancy is as always ready and willing to, to jump in with a governance standing committee as we need one. Um, but if we could be actually having, adopting policy language before the end of the calendar year, I think we all would feel that we were in a much better position. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm gonna refer that to governance. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Brings us to the end of the meeting announcements. And we have, uh, I think several members will be on stage tomorrow night at the Union Station for the fashion show, or off the superintendent, I believe, and the uh, city manager. So uh, to fundraise, I think, with Burncoe Dance Team, I believe, and uh, so uh, hopefully people come out. And uh, the three sixty-five Z does have their fundraiser also on Saturday night in Auburn at the Boeing, and so. And Father Avid, who's been, well, we don't have many clergy come in anymore, we used to, but Father Avid is retiring from the Armenian Church this week. Uh, having his time in party, so, okay. Um, motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, opposed or ordered?